I have a brief agenda that we're going to go through. Before they do that, let's go through the formality of pledge of the flag, and then I'll share a brief agenda and take any additions to that. A pledge of allegiance to the flag.
... The United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So, so a few items for the agenda. Okay. We have a quorum here with one, two, three, four, or five of the six council members. So this will be an official meeting. The agenda for tonight is I'll give you a brief update with input possibly from Jennifer and from Sean on what we were doing with the budget. Next, we're going to move into talking about legal issues that are facing the city and what council is going to be doing about that and having a brief question and answer period. We'll talk briefly about the bid for the construction work in our neighborhoods here. Tonight, we can't do a second reading on the COVID ordinance because tonight's meeting is actually an extension of last week's meeting. It's basically the same reading, so there is no second reading of that tonight.
Joe, if I may, I'm going to move that you be appointed mayor for purposes of conducting this meeting. Senate council has to have some lead it since there's an absence here, so do I have a second? Those in favor?
Yes.
Thank you. All right, Joe, you'll do that.
We'll talk about a new format possibly for how we can approve the financial reports and manage the communication and accounting of the mayor's salary. Then we'll do the police report and adjourn unless there's additions from the, from the crowd or from the rest of council. Yes, sir.
Meeting change? Tuesday meeting change? Can that be a second meeting tonight?
We can't continue first reading.
It can't be second reading.
Okay.
Were you, could you capture my ramblings?
I, I did.
We're good. We'll clean, we'll clean it up later.
We can announce in this meeting that we will do that. It's just that we can't have the ordinance second reading. Since this is a regular meeting, we can announce in this meeting that our next meeting would be the second if you wish, rather than the first. And then at that time, you could approve the ordinance and then we'll get to that.
Yeah, I wondered about that.
Frankly, I would love that.
Yeah.
Thanks if that helps at all.
Any other new items before we move on the police, before we, the final item would be the police report?
Do we need to vote about having that second Tuesday? Well, we already said, we, we're going to do it if we adjourn to that time because we already said that's what we were going to do, so we can simply say it in this meeting if we wish.
Just call it.
And then there will be, then there will be a vote.
Sorry, I think I heard that.
Any other additions from the audience? If not, let's move along. First item was update on the budget and what the three of us were working on. The budget was set and approved in, I guess it was the third week in.
June 22nd.
Yeah, the third week, June 22nd. And that was approved and it was in time for the one July deadline. However, it was never put in the same format as what we had before, so it wasn't easy to follow. I think we've accomplished that tonight. The numbers stayed the same, but getting things in the right category and we could compare them to historical categories. And from there, we'll be able to get it in the paper. So that's the brief update. Any embellishment from?
Do we have a timeframe for getting it tuned to paper?
Well, we're, we're behind. So the ordinance is approved.
Yeah, it was approved back in June.
It probably just took a little.
Well, let's do this. Give, I have the audit coming up as well, so give me, give me seven days and then I will share back and forth on email and then this time next week.
That's very useful.
Thank you.
And again, it's just a formatic change.
Yeah.
Right. Some clarifications now are clear, 100%, which is great news, and then I'm good on the formats.
Was it easier for you to read?
Easier?
Was it easier for you to read the way it was?
Oh, no, I'm good. I mean, I mean honestly, any kind of budget, you want to understand what's being spent that month, how you're looking for the year, and then what's left. That part's cool.
Great.
It was some stuff that, the, the numbers that were modified around and now it's clear. So I'm good. Honestly, I am good. I'm comfortable. Give me a week, give, give me till, those who do this, fifteen.
All right. The second item that's on the agenda then, I guess I'd like to turn it over to Councilman Purcell to talk about the legal issues, have some Q and A, and I guess a little presentation.
I wanted to introduce to council Mr. Brandon Walker. Brandon, can you come on up here, please?
Sure.
If you don't mind, have a seat over there someplace where they can see you.
Okay.
Lay the, lay the council, lay it down because it's going to be on TV. Mr. Walker, I've spoken to him at some length. I've spoken to more than one attorney, but anyway, I've spoken to Walker at some length about the issues that we're having that, in my opinion, is holding up the city from being able to move forward with things that need to be done because of the issues that have arisen with the mayor. I've shared with him the facts, as best I know them, of the ABC administrator appointment, all those things, and he's gone through quite a bit of that, and he's done some research on it. And he's agreed to not only look into this, but to represent council if it becomes necessary in moving forward with a lawsuit, we'll call it an ouster suit, simply to clear this thing up once and for all, to get it done so we can, everybody get back on the same page and be working for the good of the city rather than this thing be hanging over us like a flap. So Mr. Walker is here, he's willing to undertake it, he has done some work. I think he's going to pass out some information for everybody to take a look at. If you want to do that, take it home, study it, think about it. But I'm going to move that we employ him for that purpose in order to represent us from this point forward to the conclusion of this matter. If I can get a second on that motion.
Second.
Is there any discussion on it at this point? Then if we could call, if we could take a vote, I think we can do it, just boys vote. Those in favor?
Mr. Roberts?
Yes.
Mr. Martin?
Yes.
I can type. And of course, Ms. Library is absent. So we have five yeses to one absent.
With that, I'm going to turn it over to Brandon. If anyone has questions for him or if he'd like to make a brief statement before this.
Thank you, Mr. Purcell. I passed out just something I put together today and I'll just kind of walk you all through it, just kind of my initial thoughts. For background purposes, I've pretty much practiced municipal law since I graduated UK in 1999. I was an assistant county attorney in Kent and actually did civil work for the county. That was primarily my function. I've represented, our office presently represents the city of Cold Spring, Newport School Board, Thouless, Erlanger, Covington, Independence. Think that's, I've been special counsel on a lot of other stuff, so we do a large amount of government work. These issues, I am familiar with, I've actually litigated one of these type issues that we'll talk about. I had a gentleman's name because it was in the news, was Paul Mullins. He was, there's, for those of you who ever followed, there's different rules that apply to school board members. But one of the things we're going to talk about, there's a provision that says if you have any interest in a contract, you can't even be a candidate versus in the city arena, it says prior to the election, you could have a contract, but after that, you'd be ineligible. But there's a nuance of Kentucky law, and he was a school bus driver who immediately found being elected designed as a school bus driver, and they still ruled. And I remember, and I know Jim knows Greg Bartlett, who was a circuit judge, who's, he said it's the dumbest rule he'd ever seen because the man wasn't even, he wasn't in office when he did it, but that's, that's the way these laws are handled. They are pretty black and white in Kentucky. So what I did was, I just kind of made a quick kind of snapshot of what I think are issues that need to be examined and looked at. The first one is, that I think you all already talked about is KRS 61-080 incompatible offices and then 61-090, and the acceptance of one vacates the first. You see this a lot in government, for example, firemen, police, they're not allowed to serve in a capacity as a fireman for the city of Covington and sit on Creighton as city council. Believe it or not, there's a lot of it about law. A lot of cities actually make, or sometimes make their city attorney an official under 83A. You know why we don't want that? Because all those cities I represent, if I had that label on one of them, I couldn't serve another city. So I bring that up because I think there's been comments made that as an attorney, you're a city official. No. Most cities set it up, it's a contract employee, and we do that self-servingly because we can represent more cities that way. But the other thing is, if you look at the, the next one is, there's also an issue I believe you have that your, you have to approve a pay plan, meaning every employee you've got to assign dollars for it. It's my understanding that the ABC administrator was never funded with dollar one by ordinance. That's a problem. You can't do that. You can't spend money that's not budgeted. The next one would be the KRS 61-251, and that is a, that is a codified conflict of interest. And I note, and then, and I'll, basically when I walk through this, there's a provision of, it says provision of any service, and then that is considered part of your contract, AKA back to that bus driver example. And then lastly is number four, common law incompatible office. But if you look at it, and Mr. Purcell sent me the letter that was received from the special prosecutor, and if you look at that, basically the Attorney General's Office, I have to assume that what happened was your county attorney probably recused himself due to it being a city within the county, so then the Attorney General's Office appointed another county attorney to examine this. And I believe a detective, Philatru, did an investigation and for purposes of civility and what your role is here tonight, they, that, where it starts with her second position acts as a forfeiture of her role of mayor. The significance is that they said, yes, she could appoint herself to be the ABC administrator, but at such a time that you do that, by law, you vacate your underlying office. So what really happened then is she became your ABC administrator and vacated the role of mayor. Now, if you look at 61-090, it says action has to be taken to basically say you vacated your act, and I think that's what you all want to consider doing, is filing that type of action. I think that all seems pretty clear. What's most troublesome or where you may hear issues are, there's a difference between a mayor or a city clerk signing ABC licenses just as part of their role, much like a police officer might not be your code enforcement officer, but they have the authority to come in and sign for high grass and all like that. But there's a big difference between being sworn in, I'm the ABC officer, signing things as ABC officers. A lot of times, cities will sign, the city clerk will sign the license as city clerk because that power's been delegated to them. Sometimes they just don't need a ABC officer. But really, I think what's most telling is, in any of those situations, there's no compensation paid. Here you have, my understanding is compensation was paid, and that just can't happen. As you all know, you can't vote yourselves a raise during your term of office. Applies to council, applies to mayor, got to do it by the first Monday in May before the year of an election. So then you get into KRS 83A, which is basically saying, that's the statute that says you've got to have a, city shall fix the compensation of city employees and non-elected city officers in accordance with a personnel and pay classification plan, which shall be adopted by ordinance. So to the extent that monies were paid out that were never budgeted, so let's assume someone's lawfully appointed ABC administrator, you cannot spend money unless it's been budgeted. You might have heard people talk about how big a bucket you want to get, you know? Do we just say public works and we give the mayor a lot of discretion? Yeah, certainly. But when it comes to employee pay, you got a classification, so you got police officer, I got city clerk, you, this body has to set their rate of pay. And your ordinance, actually, if you look at it, and I put it in here, section, I think it's 220-006, basically mirrors KRS that says you all have to set that rate of compensation. And I believe the reason it was never funded is, it was, I think, something just done free of charge. My understanding is you only have five or six licenses. It's, it's not like you got 230A on liquor licenses with outdoor dining and all that like you would in like a Newport or Covington. Your, your next issue, and I think this is one that's, that's significant, and first of all, what I'm going through, at the very end, I also provided a, a handout I found from the Attorney General entitled Conflicts of Interest and Incompatible Offices. And I think just for your background, you guys, you know, on your own time, might want to go through that because there's a lot of good information in it. But if you look at 61-251, it says contract, it says means any agreement of sale, lease, or purchase of any interest in real or personal property or the provision of any service. So one of two things either happens. If I contract, if, let's say, an elect official contracts and say, I'll mow the city's grass for a hundred dollars, and I'm on city council, can't do that. I may not be an employee, but now I have a contract. And the alternative, you're an employee, so if you make yourself an employee, then you're being paid as a city council member, as a mayor, and as whatever job you just gave yourself. It's one or the other. You either have a contract puts you in violation of that, or you're an employee, which means you're wearing two hats and that can't happen. And if you look at 61-252 next, this is the significance of it. It's a prohibition, it's also a class A misdemeanor, or it's a crime in Kentucky to do that. And lastly is just common law incompatible office, and that's pretty longstanding in Kentucky. There was one that I saw that I think was prudent. Here was, there was an OAG opinion, the mayor of the city cannot continue to hold the position of executive director of the city's community development agency without creating a common law incompatibility and conflict of interest since he has the power to hire and fire the executive director. Pretty akin to the situation you've got here. That'd be like a mayor of a city appointing themselves as the housing director for the government need-based housing and paying themselves a salary. Again, if you want to have a, an employment job with the city, you really shouldn't be elect, you know, you should not, you can't sit on the electing bottom. So those are kind of the four things that come to mind. I'll answer any questions you have about any of it, and I obviously know you've just seen this for the first time now.
What are the steps that will, you'll have to go through on behalf of the city for this to play out?
I think for purposes of KRS 61-080, we would need to basically send a letter to the Attorney General. My thought is we outline it all and basically ask them to appoint the, the council has taken action to go ahead and have the AG basically bless us proceeding, basically deputize me, I don't really like using that term, but to file that action because it looks like the sole authority rests with the Attorney General's Office to do that. For purposes of two, three, and four, I would argue that council as a whole probably has the authority to bring those actions. For one thing, it's, I hate to say it, we're in a public meeting, but it's, you're dealing with theft of government money. I mean, if it's not budgeted.
That has been explored, Brandon, I'll tell you, and the prosecutor, through the police, I have not spoken directly to a prosecutor, but through the police stated to Danny and I, because we were appointed the people to look into this, that they would take this matter up following the entry of a civil order, not before.
Yeah, I mean, it's, again, it's, somebody was paid money that was, let's take away the incompatible office argument altogether. Let's say I said, I will mow your grass for a hundred dollars and I'm paid, but council never provided money in the budget for that. You just, you just can't spend money because you want to. It has to be budgeted. And I think sometimes we lose sight of that, especially in these times. I mean, let's just look at what we're dealing with. You, you know, some of the same arguments people make maybe about our governor, you could also say about the president when he feels he can extend unemployment benefits. It's kind of like, right now, there's a lot of executive branch authority that, you know, we always need to remember, we have a three-tier system of government, you have courts, then you have legislature, and you have the executive branch. The legislature controls the person, you know? You all decide what you want to budget, what you want to spend. So for some reason, you've never said, we want to fund ABC officers. So you really shouldn't spend that money, needs to be in a pay plan. And even if it was, you still have to have an ordinance established in the rate of pay. I don't know how it came to be, what it was going to be paid. I believe, was it a call to leave of cities or something?
Actually, it was made up when we thought we may have a need for an ABC administrator just because we have become a wet city, and we set a range, but it was, it was never funded. So it was put in place as a skeleton, as a, to have a skeleton, a framework to work with should it need to be funded and used in that manner, but we just frankly never had the need.
So that, that's kind of, I think two, three, and four, probably, this body may have the authority on their own. The Attorney General would be, need to be consulted with under the ouster action.
So for clarity from the notes standpoint, one through four is on page one, page one, or item one is the council, but actually you do something like this, and two, three, and four is the council can do on their own?
Well, yeah, council could vote. I, you wouldn't, you could do that in the name of city council, not through the Attorney General's Office. But yeah, you all speak as a group, so, you know, if you say, you know, we want to pursue a civil action to, to do number one, two, three, and four, arguably two, three, and four, we don't need to get the blessing of the Attorney General, but number one, we would need to get the blessing of the Attorney General. And I believe that would be forthcoming. Because they, they sent you a letter that said her second position acts as a forfeiture of her role of mayor. I mean, that's pretty clear. They didn't, they didn't beat around the bush on this letter, they just kind of wrote four lines.
It was clear by all of us. It just seems to have got muddied somewhere along the line.
Would you say that one more time out loud? We got a letter from who?
You got a letter, and I cannot read. Do you know what county it was?
Henry County.
Henry County. So what happened is, because Mr. Bates had a conflict because he's the county attorney and, you know, you've got to represent cities and all that in your role, he said, hey, bring in outside prosecutors. So at that point, it's the Attorney General's job to assign a special prosecutor, so they assigned it to the Henry County Attorney's Office. And then at that point, they basically took the detective's investigation and it said they weren't bringing criminal charges at this point in time. They said she had the authority to appoint herself, but the minute she did so, that second position acted as a forfeiture of her role of mayor. So basically said, hey, you wanted to be an ABC officer, it's fine, but you vacated your role of mayor. But my understanding is she's still mayor.
And that was from the Attorney General?
That would be from the, the county attorney's office, but appointed by the Attorney General.
Appointed by the Attorney General.
And that's the way it works out. For example, the attorney, that case Brianna Taylor, we hear about it a little of all the time, had the Commonwealth attorney for Jefferson County not recused, the Attorney General wouldn't even have been involved in that case. So it took your county attorney recusing before the Attorney General got involved. Because right now, criminal actions in this county would be governed by either county attorney for a misdemeanor or the Commonwealth attorney for a felony. And the Attorney General has no authority just to come in on his own. He has to be asked. So I, again, because he's on the letter, Michael Wright with his office, I, I think you've confirmed Mr. Bates recused and that's what brought the Attorney General.
So then with the Attorney General assigning it to Henry County, is Henry County speaking for the Attorney General with his opinion?
They're speaking in, from a prosecutorial role. You know, they're, they're basically saying, this time we're not bringing criminal charges, but she has forfeited her role of mayor. That, the Henry County attorney would not have the authority to do anything at that point. That would be up to Attorney General to do something then.
So why wasn't?
You, you'd have to speak to the Attorney General. It's hard to say.
Well, this was right around the election too.
Yeah, you, I mean, this, actually, yeah, you're right, it was right, it was on election day, November 6th, I believe. So yeah, it could have been, you had, you don't want to play politics, but I'm not sure that on the eve of an election, you're out and you're running for governor, I'm not sure at the time you're out filing actions to remove people and you're, it was a pretty close election if I recall.
So what would be the timeframe?
So it. By statute, it should receive priority on the docket. Any actions to remove people, much like a DEC, Declaration of Rights action, it's supposed to get a priority on the docket. So, you know, it gets filed, really the facts are the facts. I, you would think that they could be stipulated to and you brief it, and then it's up to the circuit judge to rule. That would be Judge Knight here in Wright County, you know, assuming she hears it, you know, in the county.
Could she pass it?
She could, that's, I'll defer to Jim on what, he's obviously a retired judge. Generally, it's, if, if a judge feels in any way they could, it's not even if they say they could be, sometimes they just say, hey, if the public may view an appearance of impropriety, they may choose to step down. I know Judge Bruegmann in Vernon, who's new, he's recused from cases because maybe they were, one of them involved sanitation district number one of their lot, and even though, because he had litigated against them, he recuses even though he hadn't ruled on it or made an opinion, but just that appearance that people might think because he went a certain way that that's why he'd be ruling. For example, if I was a judge in a city I represented, you know, was before me, I'd probably recuse because people would say, you're just trying to take care of your former client or something. But that, that would be up to each judge determines that themselves. And generally, I mean, I'm, I think the Supreme Court pretty much respects the opinion of the judges.
They will defer to the judge unless there's some really good reason not to.
It usually is a reason that's making front page in the newspaper, so.
Other questions from council for Mr. Walker? Her signing checks. Are we going to get in trouble for allowing her to still sign checks? Or are we better off to let her keep signing checks? Or is it recommended that we get somebody else to be the second check signer?
Well, what's your, does your ordinance prescribe how, you might have a resolution with your bank as to who should sign it all?
Well, we have signings. There are three signature authorities for, for the city. Kate Patton, Sean McCollin, and me.
I mean, I, I don't think it's a big deal. I think having two signatures is probably what the auditors can tell you should have is for checks and balance purposes. I think your bigger issue is if you're issuing checks that aren't, for monies that aren't budgeted. So I don't know what the, I don't know what's going on, but if it's a legit, you know, it's like, you know, we budgeted for electric and it's paying your electric bill, whether she's signing or not, you're probably okay now because she, I forget the term, there have been people that are subject to removal, that as long as they're sitting there until then, they still, it doesn't void their action taken.
Well, I know there was checks written on the last fiscal year that if not, that we haven't approved yet, that went over the line item budget.
That's outside of what Mr. Walker is going to be hired to do though.
Yeah, I mean, your, your auditor should catch that because you.
It's easier to look at this issue, not.
Yeah. But yeah, that's, that's something your auditor will look at.
We should talk to her because I don't know what you're referring to because I'm going to want to.
In that regard, we're early in the budget cycle. We haven't made any thick payments left. A perfect example of that would be, should we go for the Oakwood larger bid, which we rejected last time? That would require a budget amendment. We're not at any budget amendment.
Not, not, not in this fiscal, but in the, the last fiscal, we did understand.
Yeah, if you've only spent the last fiscal year, you should do a budget amendment to clean that up.
Well, what if we didn't approve it?
Well, again, that's outside.
That's, it shouldn't have been spent. Now, I'm not going to kid you, sometimes they, they roll it all into one, you know, but, you know, at some point, it does need to be cleaned up. And you hope it was something like electric just went up, not something controversial.
Let's get back to this area. So basically, we'll, we'll be okay as council if she continues to sign checks along with the co-signer. As long as the money is in the budget, we know that, as long as money's in the budget, that's fine, but how are we going to, see, I'm kind of, don't know what's going to happen. I mean, I'm kind of scared by.
I think you're okay.
I'm starting questioning a lot of stuff.
I, I think you're okay to the extent that she spent money in the budget. I think you're okay to the extent that she's spending money in the budget and she's one of two signatures. Now, I think, one of three, I think you would want to, to the extent that somebody is paying them, writing a check to be the mayor right now and an ABC administrator, y'all might want to vote no on that expenditure right now because it's.
Counsel has not voted to approve a treasury report for that very reason, but maybe it's Sean. But as she's paying herself a salary and she's not the mayor, council has taken the position of not voting. Honestly, we're afraid of complicity. Since she's not the mayor and she's writing public monies for herself, we don't want to be complicit in a, in a legal expenditure of public money. So we're going to address that, I think, a little bit later. Joe's going to address that issue with Sean too, I think. But I think that's what Mr. Martin's trying to flesh out, you know. By voting on something that she has signed on, and I think you've answered it as best you can. As long as it's a budgeted item, you can, we can approve anybody to sign our checks. We can approve you. We can approve, you know. We can do that. So long as it is expended within the budget, it's fine. The problem comes in, in my mind, when there's an expenditure which is, I see as illegal, which is payment of a salary to the mayor who's not the mayor. That's no different than paying it to, you know, to Sean or to anybody else that's public money. So that's been, that's been the problem up to now.
You could approve it and just say with the exception of this check, this check and this check. That way at least you've put it out there. And, you know, I think by you all taking this action though, I think you, I think you're certainly doing what you feel is your fiduciary duties at this point. I don't think you have any exposure for, you know, how you all are acting right now.
Okay, so I guess to bring focus to this, there's four items here that encompass two actions.
We would do it in one action now. What we'll do is, I was, we'll ask the Attorney General for permission. Then we'll, we'll plead it. We'll do it all in one.
Is that in series or parallel?
It's usually count one, incompatible office, count two. Oh, parallel. I was, yeah, yeah, it's all in one.
Okay, that's why I was saying it's just two actions. One's the Attorney General and one is two, three, and four, which.
It'll be, here's the hat, does the AG remove? And here's the hat regarding the unlawful expenditures that it wasn't budgeted, but it'll be one single lawsuit.
In previous, if memory serves me correct, there's previous many counts. We've already approved and endorsed door number, door number one, two, three, and four.
Well, the last we voted was to have Mr. Martin and I look into this as our call. And I didn't know if we actually took a formal action to approve.
So we probably, so we probably need to do that. What's our, what is the protocol and endorsement the council needs to give to Mr. Walker?
We just did. I think we just did with our vote just three minutes ago. And now we've done, we've agreed to move forward with Walker.